All right, for anyone who's listening or listens in the future, today is Thursday, March 7th. A work session with Anthony Carr, village engineer and superintendent of Public Works, talking about the draft DPW budget. We're going to start here with the capital and I will share my screen. Get to the right page, here we go. Okay.
All right, Eric and Mr. Mayor, where would you like to start in any particular order with the projects? Is there any, I mean, I guess we could start really at the, I guess we could take it at the top.
Yeah, I think that's right.
All right, so the Mannville Road Corridor improvements project, obviously as you know, is underway. I'm sure most of you, or at least some have seen the e-blast that was sent out today about the project status. But you know, the most of this money is obviously, or all of it, I should say, is remaining in fiscal year 2024 because it is, it is believed that the project will be completed within that timeframe. PCI is returning back March 18th to finish the remaining site work. That'll take approximately until early May and then hopefully before June, they expect to have final paving completed along Mannville, the Mannville Corridor and up Memorial Plaza. So again, so that's a good, that's a good thing. And Eric, obviously if there's, you know, it's hard to tell now with weather and material, any remaining material lead time, but there might be a small chance that that number might bleed into fiscal year 25, but it's, at this point, it's unlikely.
All right, not for discussion tonight, but at some point we'll have to consider where the project is and what we do about the Memorial Day ceremony. Yeah. Likely can't do it the way we normally do it, so whatever, we'll work that out later. Okay?
Okay. The Civic Space project is moving along very nicely. We anticipate having bids out by April 19th with bids due back, I believe, on June 4th. So we'll know where we stand with that project, but we're still very comfortable in speaking with the consultants, Wagner Hotzken, the main consultant, or the primary consultant, also the landscape architects. They're working on preparing a finalized or a final construction cost estimate. But again, we've had many discussions along the way and as we've, you know, approaching the 100% construction document level, the project team consultant and the village are very comfortable that this will be $600,000 or less project and all the work will be completed within approximately three months. So it'll span over one fiscal year. And again, Eric, we might want to slide that over to fiscal year 2025, unless you want to have the money in hand prior to award, which would likely happen in June anyway. The award would likely happen in June pending, obviously, no unforeseen issues with the, with the project.
I mean, are you thinking, Eric, that we would ban that in 2025?
Well, we have a bond authorization for up to $700,000, so might ban that.
Before the end of May?
Probably not before the end of May, but we're looking at that. And we have $450,000 in grant funding reimbursable, so we would ban it initially and then bond or pay off the balance.
Right. Again, that project is very well on its way for the Civic Space and we could share the plans, you know, in the coming weeks, but bidding will be advertisement for contract, the bid will be April 19th, same day as the pool reconstruction project, but I will not take this out of order. The third project, the Pleasant Village Estates sidewalk, that's the construction of approximately 1,000 linear feet of new concrete sidewalk and curb from Pierce Drive to Springfield Estates. Springfield Estates, that entrance, that, the curb cut, and then that spans again about a quarter mile. There'll be guide rail of about 300 feet of the 950 and that'll span pretty much in front of the embankment or the steep slope that parallels and fronts Pleasant Village Estates, the actual subdivision on the bottom of the hill. The state was very adamant, New York State DOT was very adamant back in 2013 about having a guide rail there for pedestrian safety and where the guide rail was, was to be located. So we've worked closely with the DOT. We have a consultant onboard, Ralph Mastamonaco PC. They did the original design plans that were approved for the sidewalk back in 2013. So made sense to continue using them as the engineer of record. We've expanded the 2013 design by a few hundred feet. The original design did not go all the way to Pierce Drive and it did not go all the way to Springfield Estates. So it makes sense to close the gap, have it go from the intersection of Pierce, Pierce Drive, then to Springfield Estates. That project is currently with the DOT for review and approval for highway work permit. The drawings are approximately 90% construction level. I mean, they're, they're to the point where I've worked with the consultant and you can build off them with, with really, with no issue. And we expect to go out to bid for that. I believe in the calendar invite I sent out was in July, early July, July 2nd, I believe, for a four-week bid period. So we'll get bids back end of July and then hopefully award or make a recommendation to award to the board in the first meeting in August. So that, that's exciting.
Yep.
I know that was a project that's been on the books for over a decade, so it's nice to see the connectivity piece of it moving forward. Second, fourth project, excuse me, certainly not, not, not the, probably the biggest one on the, on the board. The pool reconstruction project will also be bid out on April 19th. We are going through regulatory pools right now. We still haven't received comments back from the US Army Corps of Engineers and the New York State DDC and wrapping up with the Department of Health for a final but small round of comments. Again, that permitting is kind of happening concurrently with the bid process and I understand, Mayor, that you and the board and administrator, rather than have a consultant prepare another cost estimate or a third-party estimator prepare an estimate, we, we want to look at real numbers and make, to make it the best decision.
Might as well, we're this far in, we're this close, let's find out what the real world says.
Agreed, agreed. So the consultants and the team, you know, we've, every, every two weeks I meet with them. We go over everything in detail and there is nothing to lead us to think anything differently that this project will be over $6 million. Now, of course, we can't predict what the contractors, eight balls, going to say, but based on their experience and Robert DeBruin and Stephen Koenig has been doing pools for a very long time, for decades, they're very confident that we will fall at or below that number. So that number stands for fiscal year 2025.
Hopefully below, yes.
Yes, yes, fingers crossed, but like I said, we've, we value engineer the project. We've taken out stuff, we've changed materials, again, not to the detriment of the project because I'm certainly, I think the board and Eric knows now that I don't really cheap out on things and I'd like to see better quality go in, but there were opportunities where we were able to reduce some of the site work, some of the drainage, and we shaved off probably about a quarter million to $200,000 off the project. At this point, there's really nothing else that we can do other than not put the pool in that would value engineer the project. So we have looked at that, but we're excited. I'll send out a bunch of, an email with a few of these projects that have the milestone dates as far as when we're going to advertise, when bids are due and then obviously when it will likely be before, be before your board for recommendation from DPW. So I'll summarize all that in a separate, separate cover. DPW, this is our annual paving program. We have six roads slated for this year. My predecessor did a good job with his pavement manager program. Of course, I also analyzed the roads and looked at it too and kind of did an assessment and I don't disagree with basically what he had for the five-year schedule. We've made some tweaks and revisions based on input from Mike Ferguson and the road maintenance foreman and my own visualization, but for most part it's pretty, pretty straightforward. We have $350,000 budgeted. Every year we get back from the state as long as we reimburse and the expenses are eligible, which they are. We get about $225,000 through four different funding sources from the state. CHIPS, extreme weather recovery, pot hole preservation, and there was, you know, CHIPS, EWR, POP and yeah, pave New York, thank you. So we get 225, but we have six roads slated. I could share that, that road list and I'll also put the, the map up on the website so people can see now that it's finalized. We do plan on going out to bid for that late April. We'll get the pool and the, the pool and the Civic Space project out April 19th and likely paving will be end of April, early May. So there'll be a lot of projects going out to bid and hopefully awarded and hopefully constructed this summer. Lot, lot, lot of, lot of stuff going on. I'll share the, I'll share the road list, but basically they're all the roads off of Pierce Drive. So I believe Underdunk, Cedar Lane, Brentwood, just to name a few, Hillside. So then I forgot there's two other roads segments, but those are Dogwood and then there's a sixth one, but those are basically the streets.
How much of cedar is in the village?
How much of cedar is in the village?
I mean, we don't have to deal with that now, we've got lots to do, so let's keep rolling.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, Nantahagan retaining wall project, but I will get you an answer on that following the mayor, meeting mayor. The Nantahagan brick wall project, the consultant, who I just spoke to earlier this week, we were going to have a progress meeting, we did not, because they're going to be sending us a draft technical memorandum, which will summarize their findings of the structural evaluation of the second wall, basically from the footbridge around the bend of the PCTV site, all the way down to basically the woods by Broadway. In general, I could, I didn't see the report yet, as soon as I get it, I'll share it. It'll be a color-coded map that basically scores the wall from one to five, five being the best, one being the worst. And I will tell you, there was no wall segment from what the consultant told me that scored higher than a two. And that was based on their structural evaluation. Again, that was from Broadway all, all the way up to the PCTV bridge. Now, we're not suggesting doing all 1,000 plus linear feet, which is why we cut the scope back initially when we went out for the RFP, which was about 500 linear feet. However, they have summarized, and again, didn't see the report, this is just verbal. They have prioritized the areas from utmost importance, they're all priority. So I don't want to give the misconception that low priority means we don't need to touch the wall, but there's a high, medium and low and they're about 200 linear feet each. So that's going to be about 600 linear feet of wall. We estimated for RFP and construction cost about 500, so it's still in the wheelhouse, it's still pretty close. But they're going to categorize the walls, it's going to be pictures, very easy for all of us to understand. As soon as I get that draft report, I will forward it to the board, but the 1.5 here and the administrator, but the 1.5 covers the construction cost and also the soft cost of the engineering cost. And we anticipate construction for that. We're just going to start design in the upcoming weeks, we're in March. Potentially, we can start in the fall, but it's likely going to be the spring. Again, that's, that's based on Army Corps permitting, certainly we can go out to bid and get numbers, but since we're in the waterway and there's a lot of things going on, we may not want to do that because we don't know the timeline for the, for the state and the Fed yet. I anticipate by the summertime we'll have a permitting package in and that, that permitting could take six months. So it, it may start in the fall if it's expedited, but I would, I would likely bank on the spring of 2025 for this project to start. And again, this project will last about, this will be about a three, maybe three to, three to six month project, depending on how much of the wall is really the issue, but I would actually, let me, let me back up. I'd say four to six months all in, so. Nantahagan Wall Brook, okay, Clark Street Drainage. I'm pleased to say that the, in support from the mayor and the board and Eric, I have finished the design for Clark Street Drainage, the drawings are 99% done, just the 1%, I want to do a final review. Specs are finished, the bid form, which is what the contractor uses to price the job, that's finished as well too. The only two outstanding items we have left are, I'd like to coordinate what kind of listen because we have a conflict with two of the, two of the seven gas services that are on Clark Street closer to Bedford, so they need to move them in advance of the project. The main is fine, there's, I try to work around that and there's things we did with this project to not interfere with their gas main, although they are required by the Public Service Commission to move their utility for the municipality for improvements. However, in the interest of time and trying to work collaboratively, there's just a few things I want them to look at more for the service line side, which is from the house to the main. So I want to send them the plans, they haven't gotten back to me yet, four, I need to upload them to, waiting on that. And then we'll have to get a county road permit since part of the work, i.e. replacing a catch basin at the corner of Bedford and Clark Street will be in the county right away. That's no problem, have good relationships with the county, permit should be very easy to obtain. And I finished building the job with the bid form, again, trying to go quick, I know we have a whole, whole menu here, but you know, based on initial estimates, you know, without locking ourselves into a number since we're on public, public broadcast, I would say that this job would fall somewhere between 525 and $575,000, so $600,000 is more than enough. There's no soft cost because this was done in-house, but we're 99% of the way there and I will circulate a set of the 17 sheet drawings to the mayor and board and you, Eric, just to see the progress. But it's, it's there and, and the improvements will certainly provide drainage now on Clark Street, certainly resolve the drainage on the fields and then we're also going to install a partial underdrain system on the northeast corner of the fields too, to help with some of the kind of localized soggy conditions and maybe for future expansion if you want to put an underdrain system on the other side, closer to Mannville. So that's good, we're, we're way ahead of schedule on that and that project. I sent out a lot of calendar invites to Eric and staff for all the projects that are going out, but Clark Street will likely be bid out in, in July with bids back and for recommendation award to the board first meeting in August. So the contractor could start in September and typically with drainage you start downstream first, makes sense, right? So they would start at Bedford Road, work up Clark Street, go into the parking lot and then save the drainage work within the grass field for last. And that's because I know that there's programming going on till on or around November 1st. So the Recreation Superintendent basically said, hey, can you work this so that it's not going to impact the field until as late as you can in the year? And we're comfortable with, with the contractor getting to the field around November 1st since really there's no pavement, it's an easy dig, very straightforward installation and they could probably finish the work in two to three weeks on the field. So that's, that's, that's the general gist of the Clark Street project, no hiccups. We've tried, you know, we had good survey information from Dan Merritt. I went out, verified a few things with staff, so there'll be very little unforeseen conditions encountered for the project. Moving on to the fleet rolling stock program, which I know is something that Eric has introduced and he's been here and something that we expanded on since I've been here too. We have a vehicle inventory list. I took that list, worked with Mike Ferguson and the road maintenance foreman and the, and the fleet foreman and said, okay, well, let's assign capital cost and replacement years to it. And sure enough, they actually had that information already. We kind of had to shuffle things around and refine it, but we actually had a rolling stock program and a schedule already, already implemented and already constructed, which I was very pleased to see. So starting with fiscal year 25, I know we're in DPW, but I just want to slide down to the, to the water fund. So what, vehicle number four for water right now is a 2008 Ford 150 Ranger, it's a pickup truck. That truck takes fuel to fuel up our diesel generator up at the pump house at the water storage tank site. It is used obviously by the water foreman and for many other tasks. But that truck, the computer or the diagnostics in it has started to fail. They do, do not have that computer anymore, it's discontinued, it's obsolete and it's very hard and difficult and we're still trying to look for a backup computer in the case that the computer or the brain of the car eventually fails. Again, 2008, yeah, okay, not super old, but the, there's, there's a severe amount of corrosion on the frame and on the other carriage, it's starting to look a little bit like a Fred Flintstone car with the floorboards running out. It's, it's, it's hitting that point. You know, it's hitting that point where the, same thing with the Parks Foreman, right? It was, it was the same deal with his, with his vehicle, but we're concerned that a new computer would cost several thousand dollars if we even find one and there's no guarantee that computer would last because they don't give you any guarantees off the lot. So we recently replaced vehicles three and five for the water department and we replaced them with two Dodge 1500 Ram vans. So they're, they're good to go there, this would be.
Those are great, dude.
They, they, they're dynamite. The staff has used them since I've been here on numerous water main. I won't say the B word, but on, on, at least on the handful I've been on, they've, they've used the, they use the van to keep it clean. Tons of tools in there, they, they, they love them. So that was the, that was, that was, those vans are done. I know that was a big initiative too with Eric, working with my predecessor and, and the department before I got here. But vehicle number four is, is on the fritz and if it wasn't, I wouldn't be asking for it if, if it wasn't warranted. So that.
I understand, yeah.
That's vehicle number four, $65,000.
Can we hold there? Can we, I understand it may be a little bit more in the short term, but I think it would pay out to get a F-150 Lightning to replace that, another electric vehicle?
Yes, yes, we're, we're, we're on board with it and that $65,000 would cover an electric vehicle, similar to the Parks Foreman, the Lightning, yes.
Oh, great.
Good.
Yep, that's the plan. We, we have, look, I, I'm a big fan of the electrical vehicles and the equipment, depending on what it is. You know, there's some of the technologies that are not there yet with the electric equipment, they haven't been around long enough. Leaf blowers are pretty good, the trucks, yes, they, they, they're there, they've been there quite a bit. You know, things like street sweepers, they're mega expensive, probably close to $800,000 realm and they're still not as effective, at least from the white papers I read and colleagues who have.
There's, the demo for the street, the electric sweet, street sweeper was really impressive. Did you see that one that they brought? I'm sure it's super expensive, but.
Yeah, 800, it's about 800, anywhere from $600,000. But.
It's very quiet, too.
Yeah, they say, you know, this, again, from the stuff I've read and some of the demos I've seen, not at DPW, there's still some, some question, there's still some questions as to how much it can actually suck up and, and keep. And again, the technology is fairly new, definitely something to look at, but just for frame of reference, the traditional street sweeper is maybe 250 to 350 and the electric is about 750 to 800.
Yeah, yeah, I know, it's a huge difference.
Yeah.
This particular company is the only thing they make. I think they're a Scandinavian country and they have a different, they have a, you know, very specific way they use the batteries and stuff. I can't remember, do you remember, Eric, what the name of the company was?
No.
I'd be curious to look it up, not, just, just, you know, to have on the radar.
All right, so a deeper discussion to come, let's keep rolling here because we're on a schedule.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
No problem, no problem.
So I just. Areas to come up with a list of things we need to dig into deeper on, right?
Yes, yes, but I just, okay, so vehicle number four is good. I'll pop back up now to the other vehicles. Vehicle number 12, which is the sister or brother vehicle to truck number 24, which the board, Eric supported and the board approved, which will be coming very, very, very soon. We have a new freight liner, the new truck 24. The body and the chassis are done, they're actually putting the lights on and working out some last-minute things, probably in the next two to four weeks, we'll have the new truck number 24. I'll let Eric know and if anybody, anybody wants to come see it, certainly can. Freight liners are great trucks, they're just as good as MAC, but you're not paying for the MAC name. But in any case, the old truck 24 and the, and the current truck 12 were both 2001 internationals. They've seen better days, we've had transmission problems, hydraulic problems. This is a big truck, this is currently, it's a six-wheeler. We probably replace it with another, with a 10-wheeler, which is what the new truck 24 is. What's the difference? It could hold more material and it's a little bit heavy, so that's the main difference. But same function, snowplow, dump truck, salter, it would be, it would be the works. But again, you know, we got them the same time and that's the one thing I, I've learned in White Plains and Noah too, is inheriting a fleet where at one time it was new, when you buy vehicles all at the same time and they're not staggered or rolling. Well, you know what happens, right? At year 10, now you have five vehicles that are all 10 years old and they all have varying problems. So that's typically why you don't do that and you do what we're doing now, which is the rolling. So that's the request, mayor and board, that's an out year though, that's fiscal year 2027. You know, could it be 300 maybe?
Right.
That's an out year, but that's, that's an important truck. And again, it would, it would be the brother sister tandem to the old international and now you'd have two freight liners. That's 20, fiscal year 27, going down a vehicle number 31, I'm sure you've probably heard it, the sewer truck. I know my predecessor and my staff have made many well-deserved pitches for a vac truck. I am a big proponent of a vac truck, I've always had them, they're multi-use, I'm not going to chew up the board's time. We all know it's safer, it's faster, you don't have to wait for a dig, dig safe mark out, you could start earlier. And again, it's just more efficient and you could do a lot of different things with it, clean out catch basins, clean out sewers. Obviously you chlorinate the nozzle, you don't put the same thing in there, but you know, there's ways to clean that properly. But the, the main reason is too that our current sewer truck has a half-inch nozzle. It's small, antiquated, I think it only goes 500 feet. A lot of the newer nozzles are two inches, they go 1,000 feet. They have more PSI, more flow, as you can probably understand and, and know that that's better cleaning for our maintenance, for our sewers and helps remove grease. Having a half-inch nozzle is no different than filling up a sanitary sewer pipe with Crisco and taking your pointer finger in it and just kind of poking holes in it and, and eventually you get enough flow through it to kind of get the constriction out, but that's kind of what it's like and having a half-inch nozzle is like bringing a knife to a gunfight type of deal. But I also understand the sensitivity that it's a very expensive piece of equipment. A standard vector combo vector truck where it cleans and it sucks and does all the other things is about $500,000. We did apply for a grant, just trying to go fast in the interest of time, so please stop me or I'll follow up with any questions afterwards. We did apply for a New York State DECW quit grant that we did not get for the sewer truck. It would have been a $325,000 grant from the state and then we'd have to put the difference in, which would be about 175. So that's where this 200 comes from and our thought was after speaking with Eric and kind of going through the process and understanding the pulse of the board, I've tasked the department and Mike Ferguson finding a, a used, whatever brand, Vector, great brand, Vac On, Vac All, they're all, they're all great. A, a reasonably decent used Vector truck, which we believe we can find for $200,000. We haven't found it yet, but we have colleagues and people in other states that have posted things and have provided us literature that they have a very, received a very nice back truck used for half the price of a normal one. So we know it exists, vendors have told us they're a little hesitant to try to give us the used one because we asked them, hey, well, can we buy your demo truck off you? And they're like, well, you know, they give us the whole thing because they want us to buy a new one. But in either case, that would be fiscal year 2026, not asking for 500. I'm not going to come back before the board asks for the full amount of, for a new back truck, back truck. But with the $200,000, give or take, I believe that we could find a functional, useful back truck that far surpasses the capabilities of the 1994 F-350.
Great.
And again, this sewer truck here only does sewer, so you can't clean out catch basins. It doesn't have that big, that big hose in the front where you can suck out trenches for water main breaks. I said the B word, but other issues too, like it's, it's, it's a combo. So this is just a nozzle that sprays a really hard pressurized amount of water and cuts through basically Crisco and grease. So this, the combo truck is well worth it. Every fleet typically has one, but again, depends on the size of the fleet and the needs of the municipality. Second, right after this, this is a new, a new initiative. State DEC Speedy State Pollution Discharge Elimination System, MS4, shore for municipal separate storm sewer system. There's four S's, that's why they put four, it's basically your stormwater compliance. The new permit was issued by the state effective January 3rd, 2024. As you can imagine, the requirements became more stringent as far as public outreach, putting together a new stormwater maintenance plan, which will be a big book in a binder and also available in PDF for the public to read and input and comment on. And there's also a component to it, there's going to be mapping involved. We have some storm sewer mapping done, it'll pass a straight face test for a while, but we don't have a GIS database and we don't have other mapping components that we're going to need basically at year one and year three and year five. So the DEC understands municipalities can't do everything they're asking for in one shot. So they've basically gave us a milestone to hit, like after six months, now you got to start submitting every October and April self-certification saying that, yeah, we're working towards the goals for year one. And obviously you know why they're doing that, because when you don't, there's, there could be a violation or some kind of administrative action. But the MS4 requirements have gotten more complex. We have coverage on the new permit. I prepared the, the electronic NOI, I know, Mayor, you signed it, Eric initiated that between you and the board. So we're covered, we're covered underneath the new permit, but now all the fun stuff comes with it. So in order to maintain compliance and avoid a notice of violation or, or a consent order with the state DEC, I've worked with insight engineering to develop kind of a conceptual planning cost estimate and, you know, based on the needs of what you have to do in year one, year three. It, it was decided, but we know today that $25,000 would be more than ample for the upcoming year to develop that stormwater plan and then the remaining $75,000 would be put towards mapping, updating the plan because you have to do it annually, public outreach, there's new requirements for that. So it's $100,000, to be honest with you. I ground-truthed it off two consultants, but I'm working closely with insight on this who likely be working with, on the project. And they said $100,000 is more than enough. So I said, I imagine it'll be less, but this is for budgetary purposes, the 25 and the 75. And unfortunately, it's a requirement, it's not, not a, not, not a Anthony Carr and DPW asking, trying to slide over the $100,000 to the back truck or another vehicle. This is unfortunately, like most regulatory agencies, making things much more difficult for the right reasons, but nonetheless more difficult. Okay, so that stops at DPW, Eric and Mayor, Board, PD, Village Hall, Parks. I believe we can go back down to the water fund, spoken about, truck number four. Okay, US EPA Lead Service Line Inventory. What this is, is the EPA has developed new, a new rule. It's called LCRR, it's been around, but it's lead and copper rule revisions. So under the lead and copper rule, the village has and every other municipality or smaller drinking water supplier has what's called a lead and copper monitoring plan amongst other plans that we have, that's one of them. So what the EPA said is, okay, by October 16th, 2024, we want to see the municipalities have a plan in place, not necessarily the work done, because it's, it's impossible. But they wanted, and they just pushed this regulation a year, year and a half ago. But every time the Westchester County Health Department comes in for our annual sanitary survey, which is actually for water, contrary to it being sanitary survey, when they come in and do a water system survey, they have a comment on there about the lead service line being due by October 16th. And what this inventory is, is basically self-explanatory. They want you to inventory, they being the EPA, but then they delegate the authority down to the local health department, which is the Westchester County Health Department. They want you to basically determine if a service line is lead, if it's galvanized steel and it needs to be replaced. Again, there's all different definitions, but you'd have to replace galvanized steel if it's downstream of lead or has a lead component in it. So that's, that's not a good thing and then.
These service lines to people's homes?
Yes, Mayor, this is the, this is the pipe between, as you know, from the water main to the, to the, to the building. Now, in the village of Pleasantville, like most utilities, although not all municipalities. Now, in the village of Pleasantville, like most utilities, although not all municipalities. We are responsible from the connection at the main, which is called the corporation stop. And the old play on words, and it's true, is that the, you call it a corporation stop because that used to be the shut off back in the day. For a corporation or for a business entity where they could turn the water off. They didn't have the, the water valves in front of the houses where we can go and turn a, a key. So that's why they call it corporation stop. So it's really that little, little connection right between the, the service line, the main. To what's called the curb stop. That's the valve we work when we need to turn somebody's water off, but really more if we need to do work on the line or something like that. So. We own that, and that, that length could be anywhere from five feet to fifty feet to thirty feet, depending on, on the property. But then this private side is from that curb stop, that water shuttle valve into the house. They want you to inventory the whole thing. So now, you know, because in, in, in the EPA's mind, well, if you have one part lead, the whole thing is lead. It doesn't matter. And unfortunately, what all forty three municipalities are scrambling to do now is, okay, well, we have decent records. How good are they? All right. Everybody's in kind of the same boat. Some records during certain decades are better, depending on who was doing it. But nobody has X-ray vision. And nobody's digging, for example, we have approximately twenty five hundred service lines in the village. So a couple of things you could do, right? You could open trench from, from the service line, the street to the building and have twenty five trenches, which would be. Just cost prohibitive and not feasible. You could say, okay, well, I don't want to dig the hallway. I'll dig a pit at the street and a pit by the house. And if they're the same material, then we're good. Well, you don't know if it transitions in the middle because you're not digging the rest of it up and the records may not be a hundred percent accurate. So now what's happening is a lot of sub consultants and, and contractors. If you will, people who specialize in this are working with consultants like Wood and Curran, like inside engineering, say, hey. We could find out what it is without taking anything up. And there's all these different methods. One of them is you go inside a person's house, right? And, and, and you kind of open up the water meter and you send a little bullet. From the inlet side of the meter and, you know, it measures the materials resistance to like electrical resistance. And then obviously lead would have one value, copper would have a different value, steel would have a different value. So there's things like that. They have things that are kind of like X-ray like, not going to say it's X-ray vision, but it, it's like. It's radar that penetrate through the ground. In either case, what's going to happen is October sixteenth is going to come and go. Us and the other forty two municipalities are not going to have any of this done because it's just nearly impossible. So how I see this playing out, as it has with other. Other initiatives from the EPA and the D O H and Westchester County D D F is. The EPA is going to do one of two things. They're going to give leniency and say, okay. All right, let's see what everybody has, health department. Make sure you get your, get your public water suppliers in line. Let's see what they have. And if it's reasonable, we'll give an extension for another two years. Or they might be grumpy and say, okay, and this is what I've seen also from the state D E C and the EPA. All right, D O H, we're going to hold you accountable. And if you don't want us to give, if you don't want to enter, enter into consent order or administrative action with us. You have to force all the other municipalities to, to enter into consent order or decree with you. To make sure they want to, you know, that you have oversight over it. And I've been on both sides there, right? I've seen the municipalities say, okay, fine, we'll sign. We'll sign, we'll do things at year one, two, three, or I see another municipality say, go scratch. We're going to still do everything, but we're not going to get into. Into the arena with you and be beholden to where you're breathing on next. So I could see the advantages to both, but in either case.
All right. So we'll see how that develops.
Yeah, we don't know how it's going to shake out, but the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars would cover. Someone like Wood and Curran's cost to shepherd and oversee a sub consultant. Who's going to offer a variety of techniques that will hopefully be the least invasive and most efficient in identifying what we have in the ground. And then hopefully by October, not hopefully, we will, we'll be in contract with a, with a consultant, with a professional services agreement. And hopefully by then we'll have a plan at least identified of how we're going to go about an inventory of the lead service lines. And I think. I'm, I'm very confident from what I hear from my colleagues. If we do that, we'll be good.
All right, then six hundred thousand in twenty twenty five to begin the design of the water tank replacement, is that?
Yes, Mayor. So last but certainly not least, Water Stories Tank Replacement Project. This is, this is coming up every, every time the health department visits us, visits us for our annual water service, water system. And they put a comment in there and as you know, now we've, myself and Eric have had meetings with them where they, they wanted us to do a tank inspection, which is under, in, in progress. And then we have to give them a written report saying that the existing tanks are structurally sound and adequate. Until the village replaces the storage tanks in, you know, twenty twenty seven, twenty twenty six, twenty twenty seven. So they want that to document, you know, they're, so they're covered and I get that too. So. The Water Storage Tanks Replacement Project, we have two one million gallon storage tanks. They're about thirty feet high, seventy seven feet diameter. You've seen the timeline. I know Eric can share that with you with the board, so we could kind of skip over that. The water storage tanks that we're looking to replace with, there's two options. There's concrete, which is more expensive. You know, cracks, you know, usually for bigger tanks. Like three, four million gallons, you would go with concrete, but since we're a smaller system, i.e. we have two one million gallon tanks. We would likely be able to utilize a steel option that kind of has a glass coating around it. Advantage to that is it doesn't crack, right? If, if there's movement like concrete would. And they, they are erected very quickly and they're cheaper. Not because necessarily the material is substandard, just because it's a quicker way of doing it. And they're actually perfect for anything less than three million gallons for tanks. I've done both tanks. They both have their pros and cons, but. With that being said, the eight million dollars is on the high end for the tanks, but that also includes all the transmission piping underground on the site. So the goal of the project is to remove the old tanks, put the two new tanks on, one first tested, get that online. Second one tested online, right? For redundancy, but then all the piping inside, known as your transmission piping would all be replaced too. So it's not just a tank project. It's really, the whole site would be renovated and improved and then given back to us. So. Eight million dollars, I, I think is very conservative. You know, it depends on how aggressive the contractors are. We don't know what's going to happen when we bid it out in twenty twenty six, twenty twenty seven. But I, I do think if we go with the steel tanks, you could probably shave a million or two potentially off that number. But again, we want to get the consultant on board to give us our options, give us the alternatives, do a deeper dive. So for now, eight's good. And then the six hundred thousand dollars, I imagine for consulting fee. Probably going to come in the range of four to six hundred thousand because every consultant's going to do the same thing. They're going to figure out the. Conceptual construction cost and they're going to give you a number that's eight to twelve percent of that or eight to fourteen. So.
Because the chlorine system remains, that's relatively new.
Yes, yes, Mayor. The booster station is newer. Yes, and that will remain.
Okay, great. All right. So we're through capital in your, for the items in your bailiwick, right?
Yes, sir.
All right. Yeah, sure.
I just have, Anthony's Michael, I have a question about the Manhattan Brook Wall.
Yes.
Estimated, estimated cost and it's, it's, it comes from a position of ignorance, but also it's the sort of question that we will get asked. Because the price tag is so big and so from, for, for someone who's not engineer. Can you help me understand why it's one and a half million dollars?
Well, it's one and a half million dollars, I'll tell you for a few reasons, trust me, but so one is the, the soft cost, right? So there's, there's built into that number, there's three hundred, Eric, I believe the soft cost is in there, correct?
Correct.
Right, which is about three forty. Okay, so that's, that's soft cost. And that brings you to, that also includes construction oversight. So that's why that three forty is a bit on the higher end. Assume is a several month construction period, but the wall itself, you know, estimates are about a thousand dollars a linear foot. For the type of system we're looking at. So what the consultant also did say that I didn't mention earlier is when we first kind of spitball about different options. We thought, okay, option one for replacement would be modular units, right? Big concrete block, the cold ready rock. It's just a brand. There's other brands that are equivalent, but there are these, basically there's these precast modular units that, that stack together and they interlock. And, and, and sometimes they interlock just by the weight of themselves on top of each other. Or they have a grid that goes back into the earth and the way the soil kind of holds the grid up as you build it up. And it kind of retains the wall into the, into the slope, if you will, in the bank. But regardless, that, that modular system. You know, is going to vary in size, but it's still going to be the same thing. Precast block units, no matter how big the blocks are, right? And you typically get them to look like stone if you're looking for aesthetics, which we are in this case. So they're kind of expensive just because there's an aesthetic piece to it. The contractor's also working in water. So there's going to be de-watering, there's going to be pumping, there's going to be diverting potentially of the stream. And, and you know, there's only certain times of the year, I bet the D E C is going to let us work in that stream, which kind of ties into the pool project and, and this project. So there's a little bit of logistics and scheduling. There's de-watering, any, what time you're working in water. You know, it's a little bit harder. The, the stone itself, the, the ready rocks, everything has gone up to COVID, you know, ten to twenty five percent for markup. And then on top of that too, the option of doing some spot repairs is pretty much off the table. I learned when I had this discussion with the consultant. Early in the week. So we thought maybe, okay, there's a few sections where we could take the stones out. Put some mortar inside, call it a dry stack wall, put the stones back, you know, reset them and replace them. But the wall is so deteriorated that if you try doing that, you, you're not really. There's, there's no bite. If you put back the same stones, there's no, there's no guarantee that the other stones around it aren't going to move and you're going to have the same problem. So that, that approach takes off kind of a, a less costly option. So now we have to go with. If you see sections of the wall, multiple sections in two hundred feet, you would do sections at a time versus spot repairs. So again, the expense comes from the type of equipment, right? It's not just a traditional excavator. You're going to have to pick and set these units because they're heavy with a crane. And again, the pumping, the watering, that, that's why working in Brooks for walls. You know, rule of thumb, at least a thousand dollars to fifteen hundred dollars a linear foot. And, and that's unfortunately what, what contractors know they can charge the public and, and private entities.
All right, thank you. So we've got capital now back to the budget. Is that?
Yes, I think we're good. Yes, we're good with the capital. I'll, I'll send a summary email of some of the milestone dates for these projects too, so everyone could see. And I'll also circulate the, the Clark Street drainage improvements drawings.
All right, great. Thanks for that. So now we got to zip through this in rocket fast time. Okay.
All right. I, I think so.
So street administration is all pretty straightforward here, right?
Yes, that, that, that's basically myself and my senior office assistants items. My car, village's car that I use, not my car, my conference, memberships, vacation. This is really myself.
Right. And nothing significant change, change from last year, so.
No, and everything, only thing that changed Mayor and Board is, you know, prior to, to me coming on board, you had detail on here, which I know is something Eric. And, and Norman worked introduced, which is great because I'm used to having this. All I did was last year was the heavy lift. I tweaked everything, made it so that this year would be more of a. Quicker flow and easy dialogue and just change maybe the little things that, that, that.
Yeah, great.
By so, everything there is, is, is what it is.
Software, very straightforward. You, you got AutoCAD through twenty twenty five, is that the case?
I have, it's AutoCAD twenty twenty, but every year or two, there's a, there's a license renewal and we're trying to get an answer if next year is our. Right. So that's what that is.
And the plotter died and you don't have one?
Yes.
Do you want, do you want one?
I, no, I, I would save the money on the plotter. Some people would argue with me on that, but honestly, everything's PDF. And it's just submit and I can go to search speedy if I really need hard copies.
All right, great. All right. So street maintenance again is contractual.
Yes, all the one hundred items are really salary.
Right.
I know Norman and Eric really handle that. You know, the one thing you will notice is the overtime. You know, we always keep a little bit of overtime there for the street maintenance. If there's other, there's things that we want to keep clean with downtown. So there's, you know, there's a little bit of an aesthetic value there.
Yeah. Why is the number smaller for summer and spring and summer part time?
Uh, let me see.
I mean, it's not, it's, it's higher than the original twenty twenty four, but the.
Yeah, what, what, what happened was this year, we, we had to bring a part timer on board, Bryce DeFalco. We brought him back. He was, he was summer help last year because we had. We had Mike Baronowski, our fleet foreman. He was out, he was on medical leave. And then the, so the fleet foreman was out, the assistant fleet foreman stepped into that role. And basically we had a shortage of personnel and we had to keep Bryce DeFalco for four to six weeks. And, and again, at sixteen fifty an hour. So he was basically, we'll call, he was like a part time, full timer for, for six weeks to bridge the gap for the resources. We had to do a shuffle.
Understood. So that's why that number changed.
That's the, that's the only reason why it was nine five.
Okay, great. So that, the, the line for furniture installed traffic control devices, line two hundred. Is that potentially a line that would change based on what we get back? From this detailed investigation of the Bedford Road light, lights?
This is different, Mayor. This is for, basically we wanted to work with the board and the pedestrian committee to identify some pedestrian safety measures. We don't know what they're going to be yet. This line, for example, last year had sunny sided meadow. The, the rapid reflected flashing beacon, but we decided not to do that. So this line is basically reserved. If, for smaller kind of isolated localized areas where we might want to put a flashing light with a stop sign or a solar panel. So we, we don't know what those locations are yet and there might be ideas that the pedestrian committee has that we want to collaborate with them and, and, and locations that we don't know yet. So we just, it's kind of a placeholder, which is why it said TBD. Normally you put locations and, and, and detail, but it just doesn't, doesn't exist yet.
All right. So four oh six to four forty four, I don't see anything of any note.
No, I mean, patching material, outside services are standard. They're broken up there. Traffic signs, radio repair. That, that's for, that's the radios and the cables.
Right.
Yeah, patching material, concrete, asphalt, sand.
All right, central garage, again contractual, modest amount of overtime. Conference and training supplies similar to recent years.
Yes.
Maintenance contracts. Utilities.
Yeah, the maintenance contracts again, Kinsley is the generator services, D P Wolf. Does our HVAC and our heating system. So sometimes we have problems with that. Yes.
Is that, I noticed the village hall generator is on the capital list for replacement. The D P W R I generator is a bit newer, but by no means new. Is it? A long-term replacement problem or is it okay?
It's okay for now. We, we've, we've asked Kinsley, I've been there and, and I've asked Mike to ask Kinsley and they said, no, for now. There's no major, there's no, no red flags and no major signs. We probably should start thinking about that for out years. But as far as we know now, we, and we do recycle our generator on every week. So everything's working as, as, as intended there.
Do the solar panels on the roof do much for us?
That's a good question. I've seen the inverters. I've seen the, I've seen all the, I didn't realize we have a whole room full of cabinets for the solar panels. You know, I don't, I don't, to be honest with you, Mayor, I don't know what the cost savings of the delta is when, when we go off the grid and we, we use the. We, we could certainly delve into that. I'd have to look at it through the electric.
Yeah, right. All right, vehicle repair and maintenance bumped up a bit. Material cost escalation, new rack body and lift gate per vehicle nineteen.
Yes, that, that, that was the driver. So a rack body truck, for those who don't know, basically it, it's, it's a open. It's almost like a dump truck, but it doesn't have solid walls. They have kind of like split rail, like a split rail, split rails around the side. They're metal, obviously, but they look like rails, but they call it, you know. And then they have racks built into it, which is why they call it a rack body, because you could put tools and, and, and stuff in there, kind of standing up vertically. But it, it, it looks like, almost like a split guide rail fence around the, around the truck. So that's, that's the, that's the rack body. The problem is the, the rack body and the lift gate. So when you want to put a generator in the back. It has a nice lift where you press a button, you toggle it down, it drops, it drops the lift, right? You put whatever you want on there, it lifts it back up. Problem is the lift is rotting and the, 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 where it bolts with a lift bolt to the body is also rotting. So you can't replace one without the other. So it's a package deal, but that, that, that's a bigger, that's, that's really the difference from last year to this year.
Okay.
And we only have one rack body truck, by the way, which is why we, we would need that replaced.
Okay. So the rest of that line looks pretty straightforward. Uniforms, jackets, software expense, pretty much the same as before, all the vehicle diagnostic stuff.
Yes, and the jackets are contractual thing. Every other year, this year, there's no jackets. This upcoming fiscal year, there's no jackets. So that's why you don't see it in there.
Snow removal, leave it where it was. Looks like we'll end up with its, of its savings this year, right?
Yes, it will go back to the, the good old general fund.
So pre-wetting salt spreader system, adding another vehicle that has the capacity to do that, is that what this is?
Yes, the truck twenty, twenty seventeen F five fifty dump truck. Our current salt spreader. So we have a salt spreader there, but what it doesn't do is. The, the, what a pre-wetting system is, as the salt comes out of the spreader, it spins, right? There's a spinner in there. And, and that's all connected and, and controlled by the driver in the truck, right? And you can go at higher, you know, higher levels. You could put down, you know, four hundred pounds per lane miles, six hundred. You could basically change the rate at which the salt is applied. Before the salt goes down, as the rock salt is coming out, the traditional rock salt. What they, what we do and, and what a lot of people do, and it's a great practice, it's tried and true, we spray it. With liquid calcium chloride, which is what we buy. Now there's, you've probably heard there's liquid magnesium chloride, there's this calcium chloride. Not getting into the science, magnesium, I believe, could melt down to a slightly lower temperature than calcium, but both. And I'm talking like minus twenty degrees versus calcium, which is like minus fifteen. So we're not, we're not in the parts of the country where we need to really worry about that difference. But calcium chloride is also supposed to be a little bit less, less invasive on concrete and asphalt too. So there's pros and cons to both of them. But anyway, as the salt comes out of the spreader, we, we spray this liquid. And what it does, it kind of gives the salt some extra melting ability, but it also kind of sticks the salt, almost like. Almost like gum or like molasses. And when you, when we place the salt on the road. It reduces the bounce and the scatter of the salt, which means you're losing less salt to the gutter line or to the curb, to the face of the curb. It's just traditionally what happens. So pre-wetting gives you more, more, more melting ability. And kind of keeps the salt a little bit more in place on, on the middle and, middle and off middle of the road, which is what usually in the end. So. That's the science. that's the science.
Sounds like it's worth thirteen thousand dollars. So the rest of it looks pretty straightforward. Nothing major on this next two lines. Meter parking. All pretty routine.
Yeah, same thing, Mayor. We, we send out about twenty to thirty. I think this year was actually twenty five. Parking head, parking heads for, for repair. We, we do do that. It's not like, this is kind of like a, a, a quiet item over there, you know.
Again, nothing to worry about at the moment, but at some point it'd be nice to take some of the bodies of the meters and get them refinished.
I agree. I know we talked about.
Do they powder coat them? I don't know what they do, but some of them are getting kind of beat up.
Understood.
Again, a discussion for another time.
Understood. So this, this line item for sanitary sewer, Mayor and Board, this jumped up really in the outside services. So it's all the same items as last year, deuce root control. They basically put a chemical additive into the sanitary sewer, they flush it and it burns the, it burns the, the true tree roots. Sometimes dukes goes in and they actually cut the roots out a little bit, but they add a chemical agent that cleans it. The second item is emergency cleaning when we need a vendor like Fred Cook, who has the back truck, who has, who charges us, you know, a pretty penny for a few hours of work. That's what that second line item is. That's the fifteen thousand dollars. And then what the twenty eight thousand dollars is, we've had a lot of success working with Green Mountain. As you know, we've, we've, and if you don't, we've trenchless, we, we've performed trenchless rehabilitation on sixteen, nine manholes and then another fifteen. So we've done, we've done about twenty five manholes now to date or twenty four manholes to date, where basically the contractor goes in, they clean the manhole wall. They, they, they call that pre, kind of pre-inspection or pre-cleaning. And then they go and they put a half inch of the super, super, super strong cement that basically gives you a new manhole in place without having to dig the road up, without having to bypass the manhole, because obviously if you have to replace a manhole, the sewage still have to get from point A to point B. So it eliminates digging pumps downtime. We started out small, first we did ten and twelve thousand dollars. Then we just recently did about twenty six thousand dollars in the Virginia Road area, Washington Avenue. So it's definitely something that contributes towards the, the village's I N I initiative.
So the, the increase is we're doing more or it's just these services are all costing that much more?
This, we're doing, we would be doing the same that we did. So we've done two rounds of manhole lining. The first round was, I think, only like twelve thousand dollars. It was a smaller amount. The second round was twenty six thousand. And I know for twenty six thousand dollars, we can get about two hundred and fifty vertical feet of manhole. So, you know, from the top to the bottom. So we wanted to keep that number at around the same and try to do another fifteen, twenty in, in upcoming years. So we're trying to build that program. The village has not done trenchless rehabilitation of manholes, which again, is a big initiative towards reducing inflow and infiltration. Because as you know, a lot of the old manholes are brick, they're mortar, they're degraded. So a lot of water and rainwater gets in there and contributes to the I N I. So it's something that when the Westchester County D E F comes back and says, hey, what have you been doing to reduce and eliminate I N I in your system? We could say that we've been doing the manhole program. Now, before my time, Steve Johnson had done a lot of pipe lining. So a lot of the pipes in the village, sewer pipes, I think almost all them are lined with a cured place liner, which is like a hard sock that becomes a new pipe inside the old pipe. So you're good with the lining, but we need to focus on the manholes.
Understood. All right, street cleaning and leaf collection are all pretty routine.
Yes.
E V charge stations. Maintenance contracts.
Yes. So as you know, right now we have two charging stations in Memorial Plaza. And we have one dual station in the Wheeler Avenue lot, which actually on Monday, Coniston is coming for their site, final site inspection and work acceptance. So pending no, no issues because the units are energized and, and functional and connected with the help of Eric and Alyssa. Thank you for that. Everybody had their part in that, in, in the recharging station at Wheeler Avenue. But Coniston certainly makes you work for that reimbursement and you know, they, they, they require.
Okay, behind Lucy's. Okay. So, so all in the, the E V software, et cetera, all, all in, we've got now six heads, right?
Wait, behind Lucy's for the police or?
Yes.
Yeah, so.
It's costing us fifteen thousand, six hundred eighty dollars a year.
Yes. And, and right now we have, right, we have six, correct, Mayor? We have two, two dual charging stations at Memorial, so that's four. Two more at the lot in Wheeler Avenue. And that lot, you know, we've spoke to P D, we spoke to Eric, we coordinated. It is for P D vehicles, but obviously if there's another municipal vehicle or official vehicle that needs to be plugged in, there's obviously, we'll be able to charge up too.
Right. Just some we gotta keep our eye on with the, the goal of ultimately having more at some point in time.
Yeah, we should see if maybe we can get some of that upset too.
Right.
Yeah, we, Eric had asked me, Eric and I, we didn't get a chance to talk about many things we spoke about this morning, but you had asked if we have the potential to expand the E V charging stations at the Wheeler Avenue lot. And based on the two hundred amp overhead service that we got installed from Coniston, and based on the amperage of this current dual charging station, we could likely accommodate one more dual E V charging station at the Wheeler Avenue lot, if and when the village wants to embark on that, that, that adventure.
All right. So water administration, conference training, whatever all those numbers are.
Right, that's the salary. Vacation buyback, right, conference.
Right.
Copy machine, engineering, that's for small in-house projects if we need assistance or I need assistance.
Understood. Software support, the billing system, da, 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 da.
Yes, I know Eric and Norman are working with the vendor on that and testing import, export files for the meter. So Maureen and Eric could speak better to this, but our new meter billing system should be up in the next few months, which is why the money is, was moving.
All right, it's eight oh one. So we're, we're at the witching hour here.
All right, all right.
I love this Peter.
So, so the, the
I want it to be his birthday every week.
Yeah. The outside service line four twenty five on the page I'm on now.
Yes.
Bumped way up this year and back down to it.
Yes, yes. It's, it's gonna resume back to blue sky conditions. The reason why it was up higher this year, Mayor and Board, is we did a lot of work that was on the books. And you probably remember me talking about it last year and during the year on the Apple Hill water meter pit. So we've replaced valves, we replaced meters, we've maintained all the components we had to maintain. We put some extra belts and suspenders in there. And I'm, I'm happy to say that as of a few months ago, the two header pipes that were in the Apple Hill meter pit, there was a main and a branch header. We were only using the branch header probably for the last ten to twelve years. The, the main was just off. So if something happens to that one branch header inside the pit.
Yeah.
The village would have no work.
So we're back, back next year to a more normal.
Everything's refurbished, everything's new. You should have no problems for a very long time in the Apple.
All right, great.
All right.
Water distribution, da, 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 that's all pretty much the same as Paul.
New equipment, metal detector, jackhammer. Maintenance.
Supply dropped back again, line four oh six drops back a bit. It was up this year.
Yes.
Vehicle repair and maintenance.
Right, we don't anticipate much maintenance.
So what's that four twenty five line, the outside service was way up this year?
Yes, that was, again, in a nutshell, that was the new three valves that we installed in July of twenty twenty three in front of Jacob Burns on Manville Road by Washington. We, we bought the supplies, but we also paid a contractor to install everything. So that, that's, that's where that outside service came from. That was five thousand dollars. But then there was other things in Nantucket Brook, there was other repairs on a locust. There were a number of repairs that, that pushed that number way up.
Right. It's always something.
Yes.
It's always something. And then the filtration plant is a contractual arrangement, although affected by usage.
We got the letter from Commissioner Bart Carey. I reviewed it in detail. Eric looked at it too, Normie looked at it. And, you know, the numbers are what they are and, and there's not really much of an increase, which is good.
Okay. Sanitation is all pretty straightforward.
Yeah, there's nothing, nothing blaring on, on, on the refuse fund.
Yes, certainly not. All right, on the revenue side, obviously it's just street opening permits. You never know exactly what's gonna be, similar number.
Same thing, residential, all the water sales, it's just based on prior year projection, prior year actuals and then projections. With, with, with a, a conservative approach. I mean, I worked with Norman and Eric on that. We didn't, we didn't overinflate the revenues. They, they're.
Boy, we are funding the whole village on sale of scrap metal.
But just when it comes to water rates real quick, we're proposing to increase water rates by two percent. When we have the rate study in place, we'll have, you know, more of a definitive.
And that will help stabilize things and set us up for the larger expenses soon to come.
Yes, you may recall, we went through, I think, almost four or five years where there was a zero percent increase to water rates. So kind of catching up.
All right, we got through it. It's eight oh five. That's, that's pretty good.
All right. And one thing, Mayor, the water rate study and Board, we will be before, Eric and myself will be before the Board in April to discuss the, the report, draft report should be done by end of March and the final report should be finished in April. So at some point in April, you'll see us to talk about the water rate, the water rate study.
Great. Well, thank you, Anthony Carr. Really, a happy day when you walked into our realm and you've been doing a great job for us in so many different areas. And it's noticed not only by all of us, but by residents who have commented to that effect. So thank you, sir.
I appreciate it and the feeling is mutual.
Absolutely.
All right. Have a good night.
You too, and happy birthday. And I, and, and the other trustee said, I, I wish it was your birthday every budget season. On D P W, on D P W.
It weren't my birthday, we'd have knocked you off twenty to twenty five percent.
I figured, I know.
Three month, three month car. You'll have a new truck over my dead body. All right, signing off.
All right. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a good night. Take care.